Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make that motion. Mr. Quinn makes a motion. Second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Quinn, second. Show of hands in favor. Six of. Citizen's statements.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a request to add an item to the agenda and speak publicly. However, the request did not follow the procedures outlined in Policy BD DH1 in our grievance process stipulated in Policy KL. The patron has been directed to follow the process outlined in KL and refer back to BD DH1 and make a future request to have an agenda item added and appear in front of the board.
Okay, thank you. Written communications?
We had no written communications.
Move on to item five, citizens' update and military update.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just wanted to convey a big thank you from General Donna Martin for the STEM programs in this school that she's got a lot of feedback from parents and other folks on the installation on the program and very pleased with that and the way the program is progressing and the opportunities that provided by the STEM program. So, that's what I have this evening. Thank you and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we would have recognized the sixth grade center. However, due to inclement weather, it seems like it's either December or January we have this meeting every year. We will recognize the sixth grade center along with WCC upcoming in January and it's not going to have any weather issues at that particular meeting. Even on video saying that, that's pretty sad. But, the public is invited to view the items from the 1953 and 1957 time capsules from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM tomorrow, December 18th, at the administration building on 200 Fleetwood Drive. The public's invited to the annual Route 66 shootout on Friday and Saturday, December 20th and 21st, at Waynesville High School. A copy of the schedules on the counter. Also, I distributed one to each of you there. Cost for admission is $5 for adults, $4 for students, athletic passes, senior passes. School IDs are not accepted for this special event. Additionally, the 2018 Nissan Versa will be given away by Al West Collision and the Waynesville R6 Foundation at halftime of the Waynesville Boys' Game, which begins at 4:30 on Saturday, the 21st. So, if you bought your raffle tickets, Saturday, the 21st at halftime, show up and you could drive away in a new Nissan Versa and you don't have to be present to win.
Correct. I got Mary Ann Nodden back there. Okay.
Finals and the holiday break are fast, are quickly approaching now. Students will dismiss early this Friday, December 20th, return on January 6th of 2020. The high school's South Central District Jazz Band and middle school's South Central District Band will perform a free concert at 6:00 PM Saturday, January 11th, in the Waynesville High School Auditorium. The Waynesville Middle School and Sixth Grade Center Band Concert will be held at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January 15th, in the Middle School Gym. And the Winter Festival of Nations will begin at 4:30 on Friday, January 17th, at Waynesville High School Gym before the boys' basketball games. Early bird admission that night is $2. After 5:15, it goes up to $4 and we encourage everyone to attend our diversity event. Lot of good food and a great educational experience. Finally, I want to wish you all very safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Big recommendations, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the three items. I've got no comments, but of course, we'd field any questions.
Financials?
Financials for December 10th, 2019. In the MOSIP account, $38,205,047.23. CDs with the Bank of Crocker, $10.5 million. In our general account, $2,466,351.95. Payroll account, $5,442.92. Total funds for 1210, $51,176,842.10.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve continued agenda items A through G.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Quinn makes a motion. I have a second. Dr. Fulmer, second. Show of hands. Motion carries. Discussion item, Waynesville Middle School Construction Update, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. President. And Don Hussman is once again here this month.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's presentation is a couple of weeks old now. Let's see if we can't get us. And I think it shows by some of the site progress. I understand now, Kevin was telling me that there's a substantial amount of backfill in front of the building now, so it's beginning to look a little bit more like a school. Lot of progress really since I've been down here to speak with you. Foundation walls going up and you'll notice some of the waterproofing behind that truck. I thought this was kind of an interesting shot I wanted to show you. It's the substructure that holds up the front entry, main entry into the building and all of that obviously will be concealed once it's backfilled and it probably is at this point, but it's kind of interesting to see some of the detail involved with that structure. More foundation walls and again, I understand that this has been substantially backfilled, so it really will begin to change the character and how we'll perceive the building. Foundation waterproofing. Masonry is continuing and fortunately for, you know, as long as we have rising temperatures above 32 degrees, we can, the masons can continue. I know you had a little bit of inclement weather the last couple of days and progress probably slowed down a little bit on that. This is at the end of the, at the east end, looking back into the school and you'll see some large conduits coming up from the ground. That's underground electric work and then again, foundations and reinforcing steel continues. Kind of interesting thing about that reinforcing steel and those very tall masonry walls, if you recall, that's around all of the music classrooms and those are, those walls are reinforced with both steel and a slurry of concrete in the cells. And each one of those blocks has to be threaded through those bars that are standing out and that's what creates the strength of the wall and allows those rooms to be classified as storm shelters. Lot of detailed work in that, in the assembly of those walls. Again, just another view of the same thing. If I understand correctly, I believe that some of the floor slabs have now been poured and I assume that that occurred last week, into the tail end of last week, so that will be good. Not all of the slabs will be poured at once and that will allow the contractor to move his equipment in and begin to set structural steel. I thought this was kind of an interesting shot when you look at some of those, that's a footing for one of the steel columns and just to see the amount of reinforcing steel in one of those very deep footings, just a massive amount of steel and concrete goes in those and you can just imagine the loads that are imposed on that. I assume by now, that's all been covered. Now, we're looking back the opposite direction toward the east and in the sort of near foreground, you can see a lot of those white things sticking out of the, out of the ground and that's, we're looking into the art classroom and family and consumer science areas.
Stuff on the posters like that.
Opposite view of that. This one's a little dark. We're standing inside the gymnasium and the work continues in there. The floor is all covered and they're doing some ceiling work and such. And I believe the last image I have is, electric work is now beginning to move through the building, so even though we're not totally always in the exterior with construction, we do have a lot of other forms of construction beginning to start. Electrical is one of them. I believe that's the last image. Any questions I could answer?
Any comments or questions?
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
District Wellness Update, Mrs. Long.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our, the progress that we've made on our action steps as defined in the CSEP for Wellness this year so far. Just going to cover a few of the various initiatives and focus areas that we have in this area. The first one, we actually touched a little bit on this Pause and Think Project. Whenever I did the grant review earlier this year, but as you can see, that was one of our steps, utilizing a multitude of resources to try to develop healthy habit lessons for students and that healthy habit curriculum. So, that is underway at Partridge Elementary. Reminder, that is funded by the FISF grant that we received last year and they have been, Coach Heberling and Ms. Poncy Batts, the coach and counselor there at Partridge, have been doing nutrition lessons with the students. They've done mindfulness and resilience lessons, some conflict resolution, structured play training with some graduate students out of the University of Missouri that can be implemented on the playground. They have stencils down on the playground that they got to use a little bit before the weather turned to facilitate some of that, using a lot of manipulatives for those nutrition lessons, getting really hands-on, good visuals for the kids. And then the pictures there are the hygiene and disease prevention lessons with the Glow Wash that they used and actually, that was facilitated by our high school students in the WAYMed program. They came and did that lesson with all the second graders. So, the high school students taught that lesson to the second graders at Partridge a couple of weeks ago. This is our, some of our goals in the area of staff wellness and so focusing on staff wellness, that's something that the Wellness Advisory Committee has provided some really great input into this year. We actually just sent out this week our second wellness newsletter of the school year and that was with a focus on mindfulness. We're doing one per quarter with a different focus. The first one was on movement and that just provides resources for staff, tips, some links. In the fall one, we did put a link in there for a fall survey and get some great feedback from staff on their interest areas, as well as methods of how they'd like to receive some information or activities on wellness so that we know better what to plan and what their schedules allow and what their interests are in those areas. It also announces the quarterly wellness challenges that we're hosting this year. We announced in the second quarter one this week, a reminder count that staff members can opt into and that is just an idea for those that are interested. It's obviously optional, but it will send you reminders about the challenges going on and just little, every once in a while, you'll get a little wellness tip or, you know, to keep us focused and remind us of some things that we could do to keep ourselves healthier. And then, second semester, we're going to start a Google Classroom for Wellness for staff members with just some different options in there, some meal planning, some recipe and diet sharing, strand on trauma-informed practices with some Q and A with an expert in there, so just hitting some of the different areas of wellness in that Google Classroom so that our staff can participate on some online learning in that area as well that they indicated was of interest. These are our four quarterly challenges this year. The Step Challenge winners will be announced as soon as we get back in January. We had some great participation there and some really motivated staff members to get a lot of steps in during November. Each building is doing a different activity of their choice for the gratitude challenge second quarter and that'll wrap up this week. Third quarter will be a hydration challenge and then a fourth quarter is a self-care challenge. The incentives that we're using to provide for staff for these, we're paid with for that, by that money that we received from Met for our HRA, our Health Risk Assessment participation because we have such great participation. They pay us a monetary incentive for that, so we're using that to fund these projects. And trauma-informed work, that's another area of our action steps. And on this side, you'll see that's actually the Missouri model for trauma-informed on the bottom with the spectrum of moving your staff, your building, your district from being trauma-aware to trauma-informed in your practices. We felt really comfortable last year. We did a lot of work with the awareness piece. Every building last year and all staff received PD and presentations on trauma, helping to make us all more trauma-aware and explain some common vocabulary in that area. We also continued that work with new teachers and due to request, did some work with the year two teachers that are continuing some of their PD this year. Some of our individual buildings, for example, the middle school, this fall during a PD Day had some specialized sessions that focused on strategies on identified issues. They are going to have some additional training and then follow-up support in those areas coming up at the beginning of second semester. Support staff, we are working with actually several local districts for follow-up training focused on specific application of their position. For example, I'm getting a couple of our bus drivers and workers in the transportation area to look at specific actions that helps to make their work more trauma-sensitive or trauma-responsive and what that looks like for a bus driver, for a secretary, for a paraprofessional and focusing on that specifically to their position. Pilot teachers, we had a group of teachers after the initial presentation last year that were really interested in doing more work in this area and so we would love for them to pilot more strategies, provide feedback and then become our experts at some of these strategies. They had completed a survey giving us a little bit more specifics on their needs and so we're working out a plan to get them those strategy, training on the strategies and then the support as they implement to come back and share with each other as a group how it's going. And then finally, our counselors are working on, a couple of our counselors, after receiving, after they received the original training, they shared it with their students. They created a student lesson about how their brain works, controlling emotions, which also leads into growth mindset if you, if you start teaching about that. And I'm sure that they found a lot of great success, you know, teaching students how their brain works and why their feelings are triggering these different emotions at time. And so, we are going to work, at the end of January, all the counselors are working together to write lessons that they can all implement in this area for second semester and in the future. Just an update on our federally qualified health center grant that we have, or that COMC has and we are happy to participate with them. We have currently two full-time therapists in the district from COMC. We are, unfortunately, we had some staff turnover in the position at East, but we're hopefully going to fill that at the beginning of second semester with a full-time therapist there at East Elementary. They are really actively working to fill that position as well. And then we have the use of a community health worker, Megan Goodwin. She operates out of the Career Center and actually makes a lot of visits to buildings during the school day and during her time in our district. She has been a great asset, a lot, takes a lot of referrals from buildings for families specifically in the need of Medicaid and help with that paperwork and help with getting additional services that are identified for those families. And then finally, our school-based health clinic, we still have Dr. Laurie Spar at the nurse practitioner at East Elementary. And the Waynesville High School Health Clinic will be opening soon. In fact, I believe they were going to start delivering some equipment to that site to get it installed over the next month. And these were the numbers, these were August through November for COMC. We are seeing great use particularly of the medical clinic. I know just last week, I visited with them and she said they are definitely getting steady particularly this time of year and you can see, you know, there's, they have some repeat patients as well, but they are an absolute great resource to our students and we do look forward to having them onsite at the high school at times because I know those secondary students, that'll be a great convenience to them when it's needed as well. And then at the very bottom, they also do provide dental visits and they come in and do dental visits in each of the buildings throughout the year as well. So, those were the ones that they had done so far up until November of this year. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Long. While you're there. District volunteer program.
Right, I'll keep going. Yes, thank you again for the opportunity to, just to talk about this invaluable resource that we have in our district and to brag a little bit about our volunteers' work this year. There we go. There's an update on the number of registered volunteers annually and the hours served annually and so you can see last year's totals in there. Those have been updated. Also, last spring, we gave the following Presidential Volunteer Awards that are listed on the bottom as well, so you can see that was really exciting. It's nice to see, you know, 18 people received the bronze award and will probably move up to the next level or skip a level or two as they go. And every year, getting more and more of those lifetime achievement award recognized in our district is really impressive for the amount of time that those people are putting in to serve our district. We have made a transition this year into using Kid Account to log our volunteers. This is a nice use of a system that was already in use in a couple of our buildings and now in all of the elementary buildings, but actually, we now have Kid Account at every building where a volunteer, as you can see, they can sign the little click volunteer when they go in. That's an immediate check. It lets the building know if they are a district-approved volunteer, if they've gone through our approval process. It also is a great tracking mechanism for volunteer hours. Previously, we used a system, Better Impact, where volunteers could track their own hours and/or we used paper logs. This being used, you know, just as the system to log into the building, just like if they were visiting, they do it as a volunteer instead whenever they come in. We're really hopeful that it's going to help us capture a lot of those hours that they were doing and just, you know, some volunteers are just reluctant to write it down and they're, they don't want the bragging points themselves on it, but this allows us to recognize them for their work. It'll also eventually give the ability to print volunteer badges at each school site, which will be a great convenience to our parents that are going into those areas. I know East actually can already print their own volunteer and has been printing them for the parents that come in there. So, once they're approved through our approval process and they go to volunteer for the first time, they can get that done instead of having to go to either the CRO office or the district office to have that done. So, that's just a great convenience for our volunteers. I wanted to highlight a couple of our volunteer programs, one being our PIE Partners. Last year, they provided over 2,500 hours and I say that because you talk about not tracking hours. This is a group that doesn't always put it on paper. They just show up and do a lot, as we know. And so, there's a list of our PIE Partners to the right, some pictures of their work that they do. I know, you know, just on behalf of our buildings, they are great resources. Every time we're planning a big activity, you know, and you call on their PIE Partner without hesitation, they're there to help and do what they can to help out in our building. So, we're really proud of those relationships we have and the help that we get from our PIE Partners. Our WAY Connect program is our mentorship program, expanded this year, piloted last year at Freedom, expanded into East, the sixth grade center and the middle school this year. And we currently have over 20 mentors giving 30 minutes a week to mentor our students. In the buildings, they, each, excuse me, each student has a specific goal that they're, you know, trying to accomplish and so that mentor just comes in and works with them during that time. We would love, as always, we had some great success in recruiting mentors at the beginning of this year, but we keep identifying more and more students that could use it. So, again, if you know anyone that would like to be a mentor and can give 30 minutes a week to mentoring students, we'd love for them to come. And that is, actually, that is Maestra Lee in the bottom-left corner. She volunteers after school. She comes into the after-school program and has a student that she mentors weekly in that program. So, and we have a lot of staff, not a lot, we have some staff members, we have OPUS staff that stay and do that as well after they're done with theirs. That's pretty neat as well. It's just a great engagement activity and we're really happy with the community that participates in that. And just a reminder, Snack in a Pack is volunteer-run. So, I thought this would, you know, be a great time just to say everything from the donations of the food, packing the food into the bags, delivering the packs to the schools, picking up and returning those empty containers from schools. Those are volunteers that do every single bit of that part of that process. So, it is run off of the hard work of volunteers and averages about 80 hours a month of volunteer time, about 35 volunteers a month to get those packs out to our students. And we will be sending two pretty large packs home in the next two days with our kids this week, so. And it takes a lot. They were actually, you know, calling in today wanting to know what time they need to show up tomorrow to get that done now that we've, they've been out for a couple of days. So, that's exciting and we're just really happy about how the community helps embrace this program and our students that really rely on it. And just finally, last year, as I mentioned in the very beginning, our volunteers tracked over 17,000 hours of service. You know, they do give you the ability to monetize that, although we know that that can be helpful to us to maintain current grant funding as well as securing additional opportunities for grants in the future, but really, it's the impact that those volunteers have on our students that there's just no way to quantify it and the help that they give in a lot of different areas for our students. So, we just want to say thanks to them. So, speaking of, we'd love to say thanks again. If you haven't already, save the date for the volunteer banquet in April. April 16th will be this year's volunteer banquet to recognize and honor our volunteers.
That banquet's always very nice. Encourage everybody to come out for that. District Course Description Changes, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are proposed course description changes from the high school and really, they're only in our FACS classes. They renamed a couple of courses and realigned the pathways so that students have pathways to a career and technical education certification through our FACS programming and we will be bringing these for approval at our January meeting.
Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Fall Sports Report, Mr. Ace.
Okay, this is just a wrap-up from the fall season. Again, our focus areas for the athletic department, number one, academics. Number two, tiger performance training. Three, our competitive success and four, our community outreach involvement. Starting with the most important, academics. You can see a breakdown of all team GPAs here. We have our varsity level athletes. Those varsity level athletes as a whole average were 3.3 and then when we compare that to all student athletes over there, we can see that is a 3.19 for all student athletes. That's anyone that was on a roster at all, whether they finished or did not finish. So, you can see that difference between those varsity level and all. Our fall academic all-conference, all-conference was a 3.75 GPA or higher. We had 43 students that reached all-conference and then we had 37 students that were honorable mention. That is a 3.5 to a 3.74. That's a total of 82 fall athletes and that was a 13.8% increase overall for both all-conference and honorable mention students and then a 34.38 increase of all-conference student athletes from last year to this year. This is just a breakdown of the sports and where those, where those athletes fell and of course, what category, along with their totals. A lot of this having to do with our WIN development. This year, we did implement one day a week at the middle school for student athletes at the high school level. As we, as we talked about last time, we went to two days of WIN. So, that was Monday and Wednesday where they're having that WIN time from 2:45 to 3:30. Those student athletes are required to have some type of study hall. Depending on what their grades are for those kids that are DNF students, they have mandatory, mandatory academic assistance after school. In addition to that, we were able to implement our after-school feeding program and we are feeding over 350 meals to student athletes each day after school and that's not just, that's just student athletes. We're, we're doing much more than that after school for the overall program. Tiger Performance Training, we currently have 82% of our student athletes attending TPT, 70% or more of the time since the beginning of the year. Over 80% of our student athletes at the middle school are currently in TPT classes and we're also, we have also implemented and incorporated the sixth grade center two days a week, coming over to the middle school after school with our TPT program. Just looking at the gains overall, when we, when we do our maxes, you can see from July to December, we've pretty much had gains in each area. Deadlift is not complete because that is what they're, what they're doing this week, so we do not have the numbers for that. So we do not have the numbers for that. Our competitive success, we've also seen increases in this area. We had 27 all-conference student-athletes, 23 all-district. We also had two all-region or all-sectional student-athletes, and then one all-state student-athlete for the fall season. Our all-region and all-state, Isaac Swanson was all-region and honorable mention, all-state goalie, which is a great accomplishment. And Brian O'Barr was our all-sectional cross-country runner this year. In addition to that, we had two district runner-up finishes, one being our football team and then our other being our boys soccer team. We've had several signings, this first signing period. Here you have four. Madison Newsom is going to Hannibal LaGrange for cross-country. Taylor King is going to Missouri Valley for softball. Gavin Sacks is going to North Dakota State University to wrestle, and Eric, Aaron McDaniel is going to Edinburgh University to wrestle. So those are the four that have signed thus far. We have about six more that will be doing so when, when we return from break for those fall sports. Something I did not mention, just as far as overall points, looking at our overall points system for our conference, we scored each sport and fall category. Last year, we received 34 and a half points overall. This year, we received 46 points, which is roughly a 33% increase from the points that we scored in the fall season in the 18, 19-year to this year. Lastly, community outreach. We talked about Pi Partners earlier. We have our 310 Pi Partners and our 787 Pi Partners here at the building. They've been a big part of that outreach. We also have our Tiger Tough Talks that we've incorporated within the athletic department this year. These are basically character-ed sessions. The sessions that we have had currently are focused on developing personal mission statements and a purpose with what we do within the athletic department, as well as keeping our focus on the process rather than the result. So really talking about those character-ed things, gaining that edge, that mental edge for, for competitions and of course, translating that into life. Some of the events that we had over the fall, we had our Tiger, Tiger Festival of Nations, which grew, grew compared to last year, this year. Again, a lot of good food there. We had our stampede in the park. The softball team did back, back the badge. They had some people come out and throw the first pitch. Military appreciations for both soccer and football. Something that I was really proud of was our, our softball girls were recognized by ESPN, ESPN Radio for their sportsmanship and just really, you know, being good sports. The central team also came and was part of that. There's an article that they did on them and then an interview that they did with our And here are just some of the pictures of the events that we kind of had taking place And then just upcoming, I know that we already mentioned Route 66 Shootout, 1220, 1221. We, we will have 12 different teams in here. Going to be some, some really good games. And in addition to that, on January 17th, we will have our Tiger Festival of Nations, where we actually have our Special, Special Olympics team competing in a scrimmage prior to the start of the game, which is pretty cool. So please come out and watch that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ace. Move to action items. Fiscal Year 19 Audit, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm kind of pinch-hitting for Rebecca Frederick. I'll start by saying, as I direct you to two letters that were placed in your audit. Of course, you had your electronic version uploaded to Board Docs, but for your convenience, we put hard copies out for you. There's two letters there, and the two letters at the bottom have Rebecca's phone number there, and she's in the Springfield office. So if any questions come up that I can't answer or you want to direct one straight to the auditor, please feel free to do that. She is in Sedalia. With the weather kind of upset her schedule, and we have a December deadline to get this approved, so we're rolling on without her. But she'll be right back here next year to, to help us out. Again, I want to direct you to the two letters. I'll just hit some high points here of the audit. One thing is a letter that's always directed to the board, this is annually. This letter starts out, "We have audited the financial statements." You don't have to pull it. If you want to look at it, you can. I'm certainly not going to read the letter, but it's an important letter because it talks about the process. So to highlight that, under the topic of significant audit matters and qualitative aspects of accounting practices, the last sentence there, "The disclosures in the financial statements are neutral, consistent, and clear." And that alludes to us having a clean audit. The second one is difficulties encountered in the, in performing the audit. We encountered, KPM encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing the audit. The third one, corrected or uncorrected misstatements. We noted no misstatements regarding assets or net position. And finally, disagreement with management. We are pleased to report that there are no such disagreements that arose during the course of our audit. So again, all those things indicate a clean audit. Another letter that I'll direct you to was a letter that I had a question from a board member, and out of every audit, we're going to have some kind of recommendation. For years, we had the recommendation of desegregated duties. We worked through my office to get that off of our, off of the recommendations. We're one of the very few school districts that does not have that in the recommendations, and that's an automatic one to place there. It has been replaced with this one. And this recommendation is cybersecurity. The district evaluated cybersecurity risk and take necessary steps to reduce risk of cybersecurity threats to their informational systems. Yesterday, right out of Ms. Frederick's mouth, said that is in every audit that they have done for school districts this year. So that's standard language, although it's serious, we take it serious. She did say, and she would say that if she was here, that she thought we were ahead of it a little bit because we were one of the five school districts that went through the cybersecurity audit from the state. So we were fortunate to go through that. Fortunate. So, okay, only one, only one page gets a little bit weedy, and I went ahead and asked Jeremy to put it up here on the board, and it's on page 10 of your audit. And again, you can make a note, you can have questions at the end. This page will actually look a lot like our ASBR, the Annual Secretary Board Report, and so I want to take just a little bit of time here, but starting with the general fund, looking at those columns, special revenue fund or Fund II and capital projects fund. Every time this is mentioned, I love to make note that there is not a third fund there. One, general fund, two, special revenue funds. It skips Fund III and goes to capital projects funds, and that is because we do not have a debt service. I looked today from FY19 tax data, the average debt service of the 517 school districts in Missouri is 49 cents, and in Wayne'sville, it's zero. So that's, we're just very exclusive in that way, and our patrons are very fortunate. That first column of $16 million, without, you know, it's just a number if you don't have a point of reference. So last year, I'll tell you that that's a net gain from over last year of $85,000. So we moved that up just a little bit. Fund II is zeroed out. Of course, there was activity in FY19. The statute used to be that you had to zero that. We still do, some districts do, some don't. It's all transferred back into Fund I. Capital projects on the bottom there, a balance of 41.8, 41.8. That moved from 35 million last year, so that was a net gain, a net gain of 6.6 million. And if you went all the way over to the far right, total governmental funds, went to the bottom, that's $58,104,300. That is also a gain of about $6.7 million over last year. So we had a great fiscal year, had a great financial year, and if you remember, it's been a while, but I reported that was primarily due to back payments from Impact Aid. Now, there were some things on the basic formula that we'll drill down also when we look at the ASBR that were fortunate, fortunate for us, and I'll detail one of those in the audit in just a moment. So the other things are a little lighter than that, but if you're following along with your hard copy, I'd direct you to page 16. 16 just indicates the tax levy. I also reviewed some data today, and this, again, this is FY19. Now, that's not current year, but we are still, after approving Prop. 1 in 2017, pushing our levy up to 295. We're in the bottom 6%, the bottom 6% of local levy. So out of the 517 school districts, our, our patrons are, again, just getting extremely great, great value. If you remember FY17, that generated about $600,000. We put $300,000 towards security. Some of that was in the bids today for the cameras. The other $300,000 was for Project Edge, our one-to-one technology initiative. I will direct you to page 20, if you're following along. And you'll see that we, we always feel comfortable keeping the lease purchase debt out there at about $20 million. That's been a standard for the district for, for, you know, predates myself, but that's a comfortable amount of debt. Two things to point out on this slide, that we are currently at $12.7 million. So that's really, really good. We could easily pay that off with our balances, but really, we're earning interest at just about the amount that we're paying interest. So it's really nice to have cash on hand. It allows flexibility for the board to make decisions, you know, capital planning, other things. So we're in a great position there. But an interesting note is that below there, the legal debt margin is 49 million. So we actually could legally go into debt by general obligation bonds to 49 million, and there are districts all around us, particularly in the COC Conference, NICS, Ozark, those are constantly lobbying to get that debt service up. They want to borrow more than 15% of their assessed value because they're, they're growing and they've got those needs, and it's entertained by the legislature, but nothing's been done. But for us, we're at 12.7 in lease purchase debt. On the 49 million, we're at zero. So again, just another example of, you know, our patrons are fortunate. The last page I will take you to is page 45. And this is new. This, average daily attendance, we can equate that to membership, we can say for kids. So there's a state adequacy target times a number of kids, and you get a, you get some money for that. For the first time under, where it says ADA number two, and that top line, 7,500 is the school code. Pre-K, this is brand-new, so I'll detail this out just a little bit, if I can get the laser to work. Jeremy assured me the laser would work, and I've just got to find the laser. Okay, here we are. 7,500, pre-K, and we're actually generating ADA from pre-K for the first time this year. My discussion with Rebecca, she said about half the schools took advantage of this, that she's audited. We took advantage of it. The biggest obstacle they had were they didn't have their pre-Ks set up for the minimum hours required to capture that ADA. We did that for the first time ever, it was the first time it was allowed. 44 ADA times approximately $5,000 that we get from the state formula, that alone generated about $220,000. And that's a conservative number. Typically, I didn't peek in and look today, but we get about 5,100 to 5,700 for, per ADA. So again, that was another reason why we had a great fiscal year, but shadows in the comparison to the Impact Aid back payments, which we were fortunate to get for FY19. So that's kind of some of the highlights. Again, field any questions now, but we give Rebecca a call, and certainly in January retreat, we'll be taking a deeper dive into the ASBR, and we can field questions in, too.
2020 music insurance renewal, Dr. Berger.
Approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to approve the 2019 audit.
I'll make that motion.
Can I make some motions? Second. Second, all in favor, show of hands. Six oh. All right. Insurance renewal, Dr. Berger.
Let me get caught up. Mr. President, sorry.
I messed up, and I'll give you some time there.
No, you're fine. The district's annual renewal for liability insurance is now due, as in previous years, the music board directors has announced a membership credit of 8% for 2020. The 8% will apply to our new renewal assessment. After the credit of $84,000 is applied, the district will owe $976,259. We're trying to stay below $1 million for our insurance with Missouri United School Insurance Council, and that's, that's just a renewal.
Did, did our assets go up?
They did. Wayneville Middle School. So yeah, that's a great, great catch because even though an 8% can be applied, if your assets go up, the multiplier's, or the, your in-sum's going to be higher, and that's the case.
Any other comments or questions?
Only thing is, did we get any credit for tearing, tearing down the...
The low value, but we, we replaced it with a higher, higher value, so.
You got a newer car.
I have a motion to approve the music insurance renewal. So move. Make some motions. Second. During second, all in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Proposed job descriptions, second reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following proposed job descriptions are presented for a second reading. 2.14.3 Assistant Principal, 3.18.1 Practical Nursing Coordinator. Administration requests approval of the above job descriptions at this time, please.
Any questions or comments on this? And do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Can I make some motions? Second. Mr. Prime, second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Revision of Staffing Plan, way first reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed in study session, due to the increase in girls wrestling, administration is requesting to approve a temporary coaching position for the 2019-20 school year with the first reading being waived, please.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion? So moved. Dr. Ford makes a motion. During second, all in favor, show of hands. Before we go into session, close session, I just want to thank everybody for so far a great first part of the year. I hope everybody has a safe, happy holiday, and we'll be back with you next January. With that being said, close session, closed record, closed voters, led by RSMO 610.021, Section 2 Real Estate, Section 3 Hiring, Firing, Discipline, Work Promotion of Employees, Section 6 Scholastic Probation, Expulsion, or Graduation of Undefiable Individuals, and Section 13 Individual Performance Record, or Personnel Records and Performance Ratings. You have a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President. I have a say.
I'll make that, I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. You didn't, as long as you think you adjourned it, but you didn't.